Regular meeting Thursday, September 23rd. Please silence your cell phones. If you'd like to speak on any particular item, please complete a blue slip and get it to Ms. Jessica. I will ask Mr. Gillery for the pledge and invocation, or invocation and pledge.
Dear Lord, I ask that everyone here and everyone in Calcasieu Parish as we go through everything, and dear Lord, I ask that as we vote, we continue to do things to move forward, that it is for the better of the people.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Kathy.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you, ma'am. Item four, we have an appearance by Mr. Dustin Granger, candidate for Louisiana State Senate, District 27. Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Dustin Granger, 605 Mills Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, 70601.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank y'all to the police jury, President Ashar, Vice President of Brine, thank y'all for having me. I wanted to meet with y'all today to discuss very important election coming up and why it's significant to y'all and the rest of the parish. Ronnie Johnson's vacated his senate seat, and we're in the midst of a special election. This seat is important for many reasons, but most importantly, because we're still recovering from the many adversities we've had since 2020. Southwest Louisiana has experienced pain and obstacles that are unheard of, yet as a group, we've remained resilient. What began in 2020 with business closures because of the pandemic quickly morphed into disaster recovery from Hurricanes Laura, Delta, the freeze, and the May 17 flooding. Like many of you, I wondered if we'd ever recover. Driving around Lake Charles and surrounding areas, I'm still seeing too many blue tarps, abandoned houses, to say that it's been over a year. It's because of these issues and many more what prompted me to run for state senate. The people of District 27 deserve someone that will fight for them because they're part of the community. We need someone that understands that in order to have economic growth and development, that all areas need to grow together. We need someone that understands that although natural disasters don't discriminate, that recovery usually does. And these are the real issues that I'm not afraid to tackle when I get to Baton Rouge. My platform is simple, people over profit. In putting people first, we need insurance reform to make sure that companies, insurance companies are held accountable, and we need to pass bills to make sure they stop hurting our families. We need to be more prepared for more consistent severe weather disasters, as y'all know, to weatherize our utilities and more resources for drainage infrastructure. Also need better educational opportunities and economic development, especially along the I-10 corridor. Now, I understand that elections are not won by ideals only, they're won because of the candidates. Now, I don't have big name recognition, I'm just somebody that was born in Lake Charles, raised in Sulphur, graduated from Sulphur High, LSU Business School, met my wife at LSU. I've been a financial planner for the last 17 years here in Lake Charles, so I understand economics and how it affects government and politics at all levels. I understand how to envision the future, how to plan for it, and how to help it come into fruition. I'm a father of two little girls, so I also understand the hardships associated with education, childcare, and managing a household in times of crises. I'm also a business owner, so I've had to modify my own business during the pandemic, and I've had my office destroyed by Hurricane Laura. So I'm in touch with people in all areas of the community. Now, I understand that elections, well, I'm not running on the here and now, I'm running on the promise of forever. So just as you see me here today, I promise to remain connected to the people of this community, because I know that in order to be an effective leader, you must remain connected to understand the issues and the problems of the community. And leadership matters. So now we have the opportunity to elect somebody that will stand by you and stand for you. And I'm Dustin Granger, candidate for state senate, number one on the ballot.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Granger? Mr. Gillery?
Mr. Dustin, Mr. John's really worked very close with the police jury and the association and everything. And I'm just asking for you, when we call, that you answer the phone.
Absolutely. A lot of y'all have my personal cellphone number that won't change, and I will remain connected. I understand how important that is.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say good luck to you, and thank you for coming here and introducing yourself today.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Granger, best of luck to you.
All right. Mike, I think Mike had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, like I say, I want to find out what exactly inspired you to try to, you know, run for the position? I know you had other aspirations, but what kind of inspired you to run for this position, this spot right now?
Yes, so I mean, I've wanted to run for office for 12 years. I was first inspired because of the financial crisis that had a big effect on me, but I put it off for a number of years because I thought, you know, you can't run in your twenties. I'm 41 now, but the last five years, especially with a breakdown in our politics, families, friends are mad at each other, with all of the disasters that we've had lately, I thought, you know, if this is your passion, you have to get in there now. So I started to run for Congress. I was ready to go the distance for two years, and I was working pretty hard. I was stumping all around the district for five straight months. The seat came open, I knew that I can make a big difference in Baton Rouge, especially with a lot of the rules and regulations that are set with insurance companies in Baton Rouge, and a few people urged me. After I turned it down a couple of times, a few people urged me, and I said, it's the right thing to do, and I'm glad I did.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Granger, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Item five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends three applications and two special event permits be approved. Have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated August 19, 2021. Have a motion by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item eight, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the following road abandonment application, 7343 Gragg Road in Ward 2. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 9300 block of Gulf Highway in Ward 3, rezone from agricultural to general commercial to allow commercial development of a Dollar General store. I have a motion by Mr. Landry to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a number of stipulations that are listed here, five, I believe, in all. I would like all those, I would make a motion to accept the rezone with the stipulations that are listed. Number four, list a six-foot wooden privacy fence, I would like to change that to an eight, and then add these additional stipulations. One, the developer will provide an upgraded brick facade on three sides of the building, which would be the south side, the east side, and the west side. Also, the eight-foot wooden fence will be installed along the north and east property That tree plantings be installed along the Gulf Highway and Helms Road with one Class A or three Class B trees every 50 linear feet, and that roadside signage be limited to monument type only. And I think everything else has already been addressed in the other four stipulations. I just.
Second. So we have an amendment to the motion? Mr. Gabb?
I just did it in one. I'll make two if you want, but.
No, it's fine. We have, we have one motion to approve rezoning with the stipulations as amended just now. And we do have the applicant here.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brine. We have the applicant here to speak on behalf, Ms. Pamela Day.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Joe Toma. I'm with Ratcliffe Development. We are the developers of the Dollar General project. Address is 3902 Lee Street, Alexandria, Louisiana, 71302. So this afternoon, I received the email from Mr. Wesley Crane, listing the requirements from police juror Chris Landry. And we are in agreement to do all of the things listed, except we are already constructing a six-foot fence on the north side. We are willing to extend the fence to the east side as well, but to remain six foot. If the neighbors down the road would prefer the eight foot, we would invite them to help us pay the difference between the six foot and the eight foot. Otherwise, we agree to the brick facade on three sides, we agree to the tree planting and the monument sign as well. We just, we cannot incur the additional cost of all this stuff, including increasing the size of the fence from six foot to eight foot.
Mr. Landry?
I mean, I'm trying to work with them. I'll be happy to change my motion to deny. The neighborhood's not going to pay for a fence going on private commercial property. That's never happened, and I've been here 22 years, and it's not going to happen tonight. So, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I'll change my motion to deny. Maybe I don't get eight votes, but I'm not going to have a developer come in here and demand to me that they're not going to build an eight-foot fence.
Well, we're certainly not making any demands. We have designed the project as the municipal code is stated, and that was also approved by the planning board two nights ago. We are more than happy to extend the fence.
That has nothing to do with this meeting, sir.
Well, that is the precursor to this meeting, but we are more than happy to extend the fence. We just, we have to keep it at the six foot because we are having to incur all these additional costs. We need some assistance, or if you guys would accept the six-foot fence.
I'm not changing my motion.
Well, I'd like to mention to the jurors that we are a partner to the parish. We are the owner and developer of the Calcasieu Industrial Park that's on the other end of the parish. I'm sure you guys are very aware of that, and we have done our very best to be that partner with the parish and develop that park. That is a $60 million project that we have committed to the parish.
Mr. President, he's off subject here. We're talking about rezoning a piece of property on the Gulf Highway, not about some industrial park somewhere else.
Mr. Toma, please keep your comments down. I'm sorry. To the project at hand, please. Any other discussion?
You have one more speaker.
Yes. I'd like to invite Ms. Deborah LeBeau to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Deborah LeBeau. I live at 681 Helms Road. That is directly north of the, I'm sorry, south of the.
Can you speak a little louder? They're having trouble hearing you in the back.
I'm sorry. I own the property just directly south of the Dollar General. I don't, can you still hear me? Okay. So I appreciate everyone's support in this, and I'm, I don't feel like I should have to pay for the eight-foot additional, for the eight-foot, the two-foot difference. When we're not opposing this Dollar General, I actually like, want it there. I have some, just one concern about that, is the entrance only will just be on Helms Road. And again, I have that property, which I plan to develop it, that also has been approved by the board. And I would, I think it's intrusive for me to have just one entrance on Helms and not anything on Gulf Highway. And so that puts everything coming in and out on, on us. You know, instead of having a two-way out of that corner property, and then considering the Keywood traffic that comes there, it literally is, I don't know if anyone's been out there lately, but it's literally 300 cars a day that's backed up all the way up to Keywood for at least an hour and a half. And to have that one entrance and exit on Helms, I think it's going to create a problem down the line that, again, we're going to have to discuss, you know, or the parish is going to have to take care of, or the state will have to take care of. And I think that just needs to be maybe addressed, or looked at, if someone can consider that. But I'm all, I'm all for the Dollar General, but I'm not going to kick in an extra couple of dollars so they can have an eight-foot fence. I think that's, I'm only asking what any, it'd be less if I didn't ask for an eight-foot fence. So we didn't, so we could have it, but have it aesthetically nice by our property. So, that's it.
Mr. Barris?
Just going to play devil's advocate. How much, I mean, what does two more foot do?
Well, it's, it's, when I live there, on my property, that I pay taxes on, and I live there, I don't have to look at a commercial bill. If I have to look at it, I'd rather look at less. You know, I'd rather look aesthetic, I'd rather just have, you know, a nice clean fence line where I don't have to look at all the boxes that are topped up, and I just, I mean, what's an eight-foot fence? I mean, Dollar General makes a lot of money. You know, what's an eight-foot fix when you're putting it in a, when you just changed it from agriculture to like, commercial? Why not? Why wouldn't we ask for that?
I mean, I just got one, I just got another story in my.
But why wouldn't we ask that for people that have that around them?
Sure, I get it. I'm just, I'm just, I'm not saying, I'm not against you.
I'm all for the business, I support it. I just would like for it aesthetically to be appreciative to the housing market that's around there. And I think an eight-foot fence is not anything too much to ask. We have million-dollar homes right around there. And I think anybody would ask anything less if I didn't ask for, you know, a little bit higher fence.
Yeah, okay.
You know, that's it. And to think about the driveways, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Landry?
I just would have one other comment to address some of that, is the, you know, the state is going to determine where that enters, because this is on a state route, being the Gulf Highway, and the state was, there's no way that they will allow on either corner, when the other corner's developed, they're not going to allow another entrance on the Gulf Highway. I mean, they're just, they just don't do that anymore. If they can route that traffic out to come to the stop sign and to the street that's already there, that's what they're going to do. I mean, I think I'm right. Wouldn't you agree with that, Mr. Crane?
Mr. Landry, I, well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I was just, I was just making a comment about.
President was asking a question.
If, you know, this corner, their corner adjacent to it, you know, they're both on the state route. I mean, the state's going to determine, they're probably not going to allow them, they don't want more entrances onto the state highway, because then your accident count and all those things go up. If they can route the traffic to come out and they're at the stop sign and the road that's already there, that's what the state is going to dictate that has to happen. I mean.
They typically like, like it that way.
I'm sure.
Especially on a corner lot where you have another way.
They have an option, they're going to make them use the other option, not.
Possibly. I can't, I can't say that for sure, but.
Yeah, but that's definitely been what you've seen in the past, time and time and time again. I'm sure that, there's no doubt that's what they're going to do.
Mr. Barris?
What if we keep the six-foot fence and ask Dollar General not to stack boxes so high? Can we do that?
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Constructive criticism is noted.
I didn't hear what he said.
It's okay, you didn't need to.
I didn't miss anything?
No.
Why would we keep the six-foot fence?
Mr. Tremont?
I never gave the fullback. I'm just curious, what is that cost difference? I'm sure they've looked at it. That's going to determine whether or not we move forward between a six-foot and eight-foot fence.
Mr. Toma? Would you like?
How much money are we talking about? It can be.
From receiving the, these requests this afternoon, we did not have enough time to get that exact difference, but from other developments and dealing with that type of situation, it is a substantial cost increase, but nonetheless, we have agreed to do, perform all these other requirements that are not listed in the municipal code for the parish, and we just, we can't incur that additional cost because it is a lot more expensive to go to an eight-foot fence.
I'm just speaking on behalf of someone who builds fences for a living. What's your, what, do you know the linear foot of, what do we, I'm going to know you have something we can measure it off of.
Yep, let's see.
I'll figure it out for you.
380 plus 223.
Yeah, I mean, I'm coming up with what we charge, about a $4,000 difference. You know, I don't think that's a whole lot of money to mess around with when Mr. Landry is willing to change his motion and deny this. Regardless of what happened in planning and zoning, that's a minimal amount of money to stop a project from happening. Just my opinion.
Yes, sir. I, again, I don't know what our vendor's price point is at to know if that's accurate with our vendors or not. I just, I can't speak on that, I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tremont. So we currently have a motion and a second on the floor to approve with conditions. No, that's it. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 10, consideration of adopting a resolution amending and establishing the fee schedule utilized by the Division of Planning and Development. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 11, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the spending framework related to the police jury's allocation from the American Rescue Plan. Have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Barti. I will invite Mr. Galan up to give us a short presentation.
Short being the key word there, I can tell. Alberto Galan, Office Administrator, and I will be brief on presenting the proposed spending framework for the American Rescue Plan allocation that was allocated to the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury. American Rescue Plan or the ARP funds are, come from $350 billion in COVID relief funds that was issued by the Treasury. The police jury is one of the eligible agencies, and we received a little under $40 million. Municipalities also received their allocations to be spent the way they choose, but there are limits to what that money can be spent on. So there's rules and there's time constraints. The time constraints are that the money must be obligated by 2024 and must be spent by 2026. So that is a factor in considering what items to fund, in addition to the guidelines set forth in the American Rescue Plan. After a lot of homework, a lot of discussion among staff, a lot of back and forth figuring out what eligibility, what the eligibility requirements were, as well as the projects that, that we have on the books or potentially have on the books, as well as the additional needs that we've identified, pre and post disaster, we came up with a proposed spending framework that falls within those rules and can be accomplished within those time constraints. The category that this falls under is water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So that category is to, to spend those dollars on improving access to clean drinking water, investing in wastewater, and stormwater, which is drainage infrastructure, and potentially provide underserved locations with newer expanded broadband access. That broadband access kind of was shuffled off the table early on due to the fact that we don't have projects on the books for that, and that spending, that spending timeline really doesn't allow us to allocate a lot of dollars towards that, but we hope that future pots of money in terms of disaster recovery can be spent towards expanding broadband access, as that is within our long-term recovery plan, along with all of the other categories we just talked about. So out of that $40 million, how do we propose to spend it? If you'll notice, this is not only an infrastructure-heavy plan, it is an all-infrastructure plan, with 17 million or 42% going to water infrastructure, 11 and a half or 29% going to sewer infrastructure, 9 million or 23% going to drainage infrastructure, and $22.5 million or 6% going to critical facility infrastructure, namely the sheriff's office facility needs, which the police jury is in charge of managing as well. All that to say that, that we feel that this is money well-spent, resources dedicated towards a, towards good projects across the entire parish, particularly when it comes to drainage, water, and sewer infrastructure. And we also feel that, that the public will, will receive this well, because it does fall directly in line with our long-term recovery plan, which we spent close to a year developing, and it falls under one of those key priority areas, which is infrastructure. And we know that all those categories are important and are needed across the entire parish. That was brief, and with that, I'll answer any questions you might have on this spending framework.
Mr. Smith?
Okay. It definitely was, definitely a nice plan, and I definitely agree with all the items listed. You mentioned about the broadband. Is that something that we could really look forward to trying to get done later on? Because I know if there is any kind of additional money that's coming down the pipe, that's something we probably, like, make a good priority to try to get that done also?
Absolutely. It is contained in our long-term recovery plan within those priority areas. Didn't quite match with this, with this funding source, but we are eyeing that CDBG disaster recovery that's being, that's being considered at the federal level, and that would certainly allow us to allocate, to potentially allocate money towards broadband access when that money does come down. So we're definitely looking at different pots, and the state also has programs when it comes to broadband that we're also keeping a close eye on to ensure that we, we access as many pots as we can.
Okay, yeah, I was also reading that, it did say consultant, so are we trying to hire an actual, set out a bid for someone to actually run this program for us?
Yes, under this item. Yes. Under this item, we would like to go out, or we're, we're asking the police jury's approval to go out and hire a consultant to manage the overall $40 million ARP program. That is a significant undertaking. You know, staff will oversee those consultants, still under the police jury, but we do need that assistance.
Is that like a, like a standardized fee that they would charge, or this is something, that's something that's sent out for bid and we just accept the lowest bid, or how is that determined?
We, we don't know exactly the, the number or, or fee schedule that we're going to be looking at, but whenever we get those proposals, is when we'll, we'll review that information, ensure that it's reasonable when it comes to, to managing that $40 million.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Beam.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to add, to try to help a little further answer Mr. Smith's question. Alberto, right at the tail end of his comments, alluded to the state. The state of Louisiana got their own American Rescue Plan funds allocation, and they decided already, and it's, it's, it's in process, to utilize, I'm rounding up maybe, $180 million statewide to help expand broadband around the state. It's a little different here, is it doesn't go to governments, it goes, it will go to applicants for the funds, which, with the exception of probably LUS in Lafayette, which is public. All these would be the private fiber providers around the state. In our case, probably AT&amp;T, probably Suddenlink, maybe others, to get some of those funds, that are called gumbo funds, is whatever that's worth, to expand broadband. So we actually, our office, along with our IT director, have been very active, working with the state's Office of Broadband, it's a new office, to make sure we know what these people are applying for, and I believe possibly next week, we will have meetings, one or more, with the local providers to make sure we understand what are they applying to do. And I'll give you an example. You've got several providers or, and they may be expanding, but is it in the cities? Is it in the cities and outside? We really have to start with where they actually already serve, and believe it or not, that's actually, it's not the easiest thing to get. So it's, unlike roads and other things where we can come to you and we oversee it, we're, we're a little bit at disadvantage of having to get these companies to work with us and give us this, and they've been very friendly, but we need to answer y'all's questions you get from constituents about fiber and so forth, and so it's a public and private. But that's a long way of saying the state's going to try, is going to have money to do what you're saying, and if there's more that we can do later through funds that come through, we certainly want y'all to take that. Because that did come up in some discussions, you know, that we've had with jurors along the way. We don't, we heavily support trying to improve fiber and broadband in this parish, especially the unincorporated areas, which is where it kind of lacks the most.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Smith, spot on, and I actually was thinking it was going to be part of this, I guess I misunderstood, but, you know, you got this deal with the state dishing out, you know, you divide that between all those parishes and, you know, you're going to get an equal share. How's it going to be divided? Is it so much per parish? Is it per capita? Or what is it going to be? And, and are these companies going to be accountable? I mean, you know, if you hand somebody a million dollars, how many miles of line are they going to lay? I mean, I would hope that the state, I'm sure their program has things that are going to make them accountable. I know, I guess you can't really answer that, but I'm going to tell you, that is one of the big things holding this community back, especially in the unincorporated areas. You know, you get people that maybe they want to move out and get out of a flood zone or what have you, when they don't have internet and they don't have public, they don't have water, they don't have all of that. They just keep living in the flood zone and they keep flooding. I mean, honestly, because they don't want to give up those services to maybe get out of the situation that they're in, and, you know, we desperately need to, to do something about that. I mean, it's been a problem for some time. We had a meeting one night here and there were some people from Vinton, and I actually, I really thought they were joking at first, but I mean, like, if 15 people in Vinton all get on the internet at the same time, it just doesn't work. Like, all the kids can't do the homework at the same time. The thing just crashes. And it actually, they said, no, it's real. I think it was over the little RV park or something, they had a bunch of people moved in and all these people were hooked to the internet, and, and their kids had to stay up till 11 o'clock at night to do the homework because they can't get on the internet. I mean, come on. In this day and age, we have that problem in this parish? That's just, you know, if we were in LaSalle Parish or, or somewhere up there, or Catahoula, you know, hey, I guess that's just kind of part of life, but that shouldn't happen here. We ought to be way better than that. Hopefully, the money's coming. What do you think? Six months, a year? I mean, when is this other money coming?
Can I answer that, Mr.?
Certainly.
Actually, yesterday, I think, the state had a, you know, Zoom-type webinar. Jennifer Wallace is our, appointed her to be our, our person on that, as where, as well as your IT director, Charles Burton. To answer that question, Kristy, for that money I'm referring to, it's a good thing. They actually pushed the deadline back for applications from all these companies, and I think it opens October 1st, and it goes through maybe end of November. I can't remember. Something like that. Do you know, Jennifer?
December.
December. And so that's our, we are catching up to try to make sure we understand what they're submitting, what is their reasoning, where, where would you expand, but the state Office of Broadband looks at all those, but they are also saying, the state is, please, local governments, get with these companies, know what they're doing, and you don't have regulatory authority, but you have public support authority to what exactly you and Mr. Smith are saying. So we're having to play catch-up with what they're doing, but that, that will all be, we'll know what their, their applications are going to be by December at some point, and I don't, we don't want to wait around. Just ask or say, hey, what are y'all doing? But the truth is, they don't have to get parish permission, but we're not going to wait around. We're going to go to them and say, tell us what you're doing and how is this serving the ones that are gapped and don't have it. And it won't, look, it's going to take a few years to get everybody, but we're not just going to wait and take what they say. Here's what we're going to do, and I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt, but we feel like you do, that y'all are going to want to hold them accountable and say, why are you doing this and what are you planning to do? And we will do our best to keep y'all up to date with what those companies are submitting.
Jennifer said the middle of December?
Yes, they had, the, the, the application period, I don't think has started, but it's very soon, and they, they'll have a couple of months there through December to submit them. That means we can track what is going to the state so that these, we know what these companies are saying they want to do, in our case, in Calqueshoe.
I'll call you back on Christmas Eve. On that afternoon, I'm going to call you.
Yeah, well, if we get broadband and Santa in one night, that's going to make, make it all worthwhile.
I'm going to call you on that day. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other discussion for Mr. Galan? We have a motion to adopt by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Tremonti. Motion carries. Item 12, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the following items related to the police jury's specific zoning and related land use matters. A, authorizing Samuel B. Gabb to contract with and retain legal representation from Fishman Haygood LLP. B, representing approval of the Louisiana Attorney General for such representation.
Move on all bullets.
C, authorizing Mr. Gabb to enter into an engagement letter memorializing the scope of the representation. I have a motion to approve on all bullets by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 13, adoption, consideration of adopting resolutions ratifying the following actions taken by President Abshire. A, August 27, 2021, local government proclamation of state of emergency to respond to Tropical Storm Ida. B, August 27, 2021, Executive Order 2021-05, which imposed a voluntary evacuation order in the parish of Calqueshoe. Item C, September 13, 2021, local government proclamation of state of emergency to respond to Tropical Storm Nicholas. I have a motion by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 14, consideration of adopting a resolution to be forwarded to the Louisiana Board of Commerce and Industry recommending a consequence for TDC LLC be set at 40% exemption in lieu of 80%, as originally granted through the Industrial Tax Exemption Program. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Mr. Markantel.
Who is TDC? Do we know?
I can answer this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Beam.
Mr. Markantel, TDC is a company, they're, they're in other locations, but they actually in Calqueshoe have a, in the Westlake area, they produce sodium hydro sulfide. This project, which you actually, as a body, approved as one of the local bodies, industrial tax exemption for in 2020. It was, it wasn't in Westlake, it's on port property in Lake Charles at the docks where they constructed a terminal. They bring all of, from that location in Westlake and others, those chemicals in, and it's storage and some blending to where, to where it ships out. So it wasn't a really giant project, but what has happened, the Board of Commerce and Industry at the state has to ultimately approve all that, and they did, and it's 80% exemption of property taxes for five years. Well, that comes with a condition that you're going to have X number of jobs and so forth. Well, it's not heavy on the jobs, but they came up short of their commitment by half. So the state allows local governments to say, do you recommend, you can't, you can't make the decision, but you can recommend, and that's what this is, to say, do you want to request cutting the exemption in half because they have failed in their commitment by half to say what they were going to do? And so that's what this is. And it, it would just lower the amount exempted if the board approves, but I can say, I feel comfortable saying, if a local government recommends it, that does hold some sway with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Mr. Stelly? Okay. Mr. Richard? You're good? And who was last? Huh? Mr. Hayes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Beam, are, are we establishing precedent here by cutting it in half, or is this something the state has accepted and you've seen it before?
This is the first time I've seen it, but I think it's probably, I'm sure it's happened in other parishes around the state, so it's not new to them. It's just the first time I've seen it. The Board of Commerce and Industry notified us because they, I don't know if Tammy has a date, but we've got a deadline to get, you don't, you don't have to take any action, but they, the board, will take it, and they may not cut it, or they may, but we, to answer your question, no, this hadn't come up before. I personally think it's a good thing to have, just to hold these companies' feet to the fire, and there may be reasons why they didn't make it, but they didn't communicate any to us. They haven't reached out since this came up, and I think there's a fairness quotient there. So, but to answer your question, no, this is the first time.
Well, I absolutely agree with you. It gives us some kind of a stick, I guess, to enforce it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion carries. Item 15, consideration of adopting resolutions approving federally funded public assistance state agreements between the police jury
Move.
and the state of Louisiana, Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness for the following disaster events. Louisiana, A, Louisiana severe storms, tornadoes and flooding. Item B, Hurricane Ida, and item C, Tropical Storm Nicholas. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 16, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the software-as-a-service agreement between the police jury and Tyler Technologies to include project management assistance and training for the parish's financial software system. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 17, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the renewal of a contract for funding the Alternatives to Detention Program. I have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Barris. Any dis, any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 18, consideration of adopting a resolution suspending the parish's, parish's policies for procurement to advertise for requests for qualifications for engineering and technical services for flood mitigation and structural drainage improvement projects. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on 18, all bullets.
19, take appropriate action on the following bids and/or proposals. A, hosted voice-over internet protocol telephone communication system for the Calqueshoe Parish Public Library System. Staff recommends the proposal of Log Me In USA Inc. be accepted. B, disaster grant management services related to the FEMA Public Assistance Program. Staff recommends the proposal of CSRS Disaster Recovery Management LLC be accepted. C, water level monitoring station parts. Staff recommends the responsible and responsive bid of Campbell Scientific Inc. be accepted. D, archaeological services related to compliance with the FEMA Public Assistance Program. Staff recommends the proposal of Coastal Environments Inc. be accepted. E, Vinton Library Renovation and Hurricane Repairs Project. Staff recommends that the low bid in the amount of $950,000 of K&amp;J Development of Southwest Louisiana be accepted. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 20, advise that on Thursday, September 9, Governor John Bell Edwards signed Executive Order Number 2021 JBE13, which rescheduled the primary election from October 9, 2021, to November 13, 2021, and the, and the municipal general election from November 13, 2021, to December 11, 2021. I have a personal, I'm sorry, Mr. Richard?
Go ahead and finish it.
Okay. Mr. Barris, personal point of privilege?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take this opportunity to extend our condolences to Mr. Andrew Bouillon Jr., or as we all knew him as AJ. I've known, I knew Mr. Benoit, Mr. Bouillon, since I could remember knowing people. He was in the Knights of Columbus with my grandfather. Great man, great husband, great father. You know, grandfather, and he gave selflessly of himself to his family, his friends and his church. Anybody who knew Mr. Bouillon knew how big his faith was to him and how, how much he did for his church. You know, a lot of folks, you hear, you know, that he lived to 90, 90 years old. A lot of folks, you know, that get to that, to that point, you know, they maybe start going downhill at 70 or 80 and then just, you know, quality of life, things like that, you know, you know the drill, but I tell you what. AJ Bouillon worked on his house that day. Their house was destroyed in the hurricane. AJ Bouillon worked on his house that day. I would say, and everybody who knew, knew him would agree, that he got his nickels worth, and he rode the bull right up to the buzzer. And he was a great man, great friend, and he will be sorely missed. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Mr. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Ms. Jackie Knox, remember her, her family. She passed away a few days ago. She was our park director, Parks and Recreation. She had COVID. She was in the hospital on a vent, doing well, and they took, took her off the vent, and my understanding, things didn't go right, and she passed away, and she's going to be missed. She was a great asset to our Parks and Recreation. She was the director's right arm, and she's going to be missed. So let's. So let's remember her. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn.